Good evening. The June 8th, 2017 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by the representatives from Longview Boy Scout Troop 201, Scoutmaster Paul Hill. The troop recently celebrated its 100th anniversary on May the 6th. Please rise.
Please remove all nonreligious headgear and bow with me. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for the day and thank you for letting everyone come here safely. I pray that you would bless us with the wisdom to answer everything on today's agenda appropriately. And please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Longview. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. Tonight's employee recognition. Recently, Sally Forbes, our municipal court administrator, became a Level III certified county clerk through the Court Clerk Certification Program with the Texas Municipal Court Education Center and the Texas Court Clerks Association. This means she attained the highest designation in the state program, a designation only 73 clerks in the state of Texas have attained since the program began in 1996. Matthew Freeman is here on behalf of the Texas Municipal Court Education Center to present Sally with her certification.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Matthew Freeman, City Frisco Municipal Court, and I'm here on behalf of the Texas Court Clerks Association, the Texas Municipal Court Education Center, the Texas Municipal Court Association, and Texas State University Sam Marcus to present Sally Forbes with her Level III Court Clerk Certification plaque. This program is indeed grueling. It took Sally almost a year. She's been in municipal government for 44 years. I'm 43. So that says a lot. She's been in your city for 35, and you're very blessed to have her. This program is comprised of three levels. Level one, a 300-question exam, 40 hours of education, and 12 hours continuing education. And then you have to go to Level two, again, 300-question exam, 40 hours of education, and 12 hours continuing education. And then there's the Level Three, the highest level. It's comprised of 18 books based on management principles, budgeting, human resources, organization, court, court management, court security. So it's a very cumbersome program. In that part, Level Three alone, she must obtain 40 hours of education to be certified. She must complete a 24-hour assessment clinic, 40 hours of court observations throughout the state, and write a professional journal on that. And then it was 12 hours continuing education, I'm sorry, 20 hours continuing education, and a 12-hour court administrator training program. So she's completed all that, and it only took her one year. I have taken six, and I haven't completed it. So I would like to congratulate you. It's an honor that I'm pleased to bestow upon you for the associations and congratulate you again. And congratulate the city of Longview for some driven courage.
Sally, we are very thankful for your dedication and the amount of time and efforts you put into doing this, and we appreciate you at our city more than you know. Thank you for all that you do for us.
Thanks.
What an accomplishment. We have a second employee recognition today for our storm response, the hundreds of employees that have helped with the storm recovery. Unfortunately, we couldn't fit everyone into the council chambers, but we want to publicly thank them tonight. On Sunday, May the 28th, a very strong thunderstorm, an estimated EF1 tornado, hit Longview. Heavy rains and high winds caused significant damage all across town. After the storm, many employees were involved in helping in the response, but especially employees in fire, police, public works, and parks. They responded to emergency calls from homeowners, helped directing traffic during the power outages, cleared trees from roads, cleaned the parks, and much more. See how much damage and debris did, so how much damage and debris do we see in Longview? Cleanup. In a period of just seven days, Public Works recovered over 1,200 storm-related service requests for an average of 171 requests per day. The bulk of the first week was getting trees out of the streets. There were over 100 trees in the streets alone. In the first 8.5 days after the storm, the compost site received more than 1,300 loads of trees and limbs. About 350 of those loads were brought in by city trucks, the rest from businesses or residents. The compost site has accepted more than 7,159 cubic yards of material. That calculates to, God, these numbers are huge, 4,653,350 pounds, or 2,327 tons. That weighs more than 10 Statue of Liberties. Like, who weighed that? And why am I reading that? Okay. These amounts are equal to 25% of the entire total received all of last year. The recovery effort now is three sanitation department grapple trucks with water department dump trucks following them, two street department grapple trucks, three sanitation department rearload trucks collecting smaller piles. Sanitation, trash, and recycling trucks worked last weekend with rakes, shovels, and pitchforks picking up everything they could get by hand. They picked up over 2,750 cubic yards, or 895 tons. They'll do the same thing this weekend. Call continued to flood the sanitation department daily requesting debris cleanup. We expect to have a bulk of everything cleaned up by the end of the month. We want to thank everyone for their patience, and especially we thank all those employees who have worked many hours since the storm cleaning up debris. Okay, that was a lot. The bottom line to this is what a Herculean effort it took and has taken and will continue to take to clean up this terrible storm we had. Our employees have worked tirelessly, long hours away from their families, and we truly, truly appreciate your dedication, your service to not only the city of Longview departments, but to the citizens of Longview who is who we serve. So thank you all very much to all those that helped in that cleanup effort. We appreciate you very, very much. I now have a proclamation. It's not on the agenda, Jim, sorry. It's gonna be okay, buddy. I'm gonna present to Tekeeta Munfree, Director of Operations, Longview Transit, and also Scott Lewis, General Manager of Transit, who is also here that I saw. So you all, please come forward. This is one of my favorite ones. I get to say Dump the Pump. It's really awesome. So this is a proclamation regarding the 12th Annual National Dump the Pump Day, June 15th, 2017. Whereas Longview Transit has requested that the mayor, our proclamation recognize June 15th, 2017 as National Dump the Pump Day in the city of Longview. Whereas every $1 invested in public transportation generates approximately $4 in economic returns, and people who ride transportation can save on average more than $9,751 per year based on today's gas prices, the cost of owning a car, and the average unreserved parking rate. So now therefore I, Andy Mack, but the authority vested me as Mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim June 15th, 2017 as National Dump the Pump Day in Longview. Thank you all so much. You know, it's amazing when you look at these numbers, the amount of money that can be saved. Our transit is growing every year, more and more, more ridership, more availability, and we're trying to continue that because it's a service that we offer in our community that's unique. And so the more we take advantage of it, the more opportunities we have, the more we can grow this system. And so we appreciate y'all's efforts. I've been down there, your operation's amazing, y'all are always there for anything that we need, and we really, really appreciate y'all's time and effort you put into the city of Longview. Thank you all so much. Thank you all. Appreciate you. Citizen comment. I have a few speaker cards tonight. We will start with Reverend Robert Wilson.
Several months ago, we witnessed Mayor Mack made a statement that we were doing everything that we could to have a task force for group homes or perhaps homeless people. It has been called to my attention that homeless or perhaps group homes would be limited to one bed. I would like for this council to know that according to the people that's trying to get themselves together, get their lives in order, one bed would not do it. We are going to need the support from the entire city to house these people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend. This is Luke? Luke Altman? Okay, sorry, riding man. You look like a doctor.
I apologize for that. My name's Luke Altman, and currently I'm a student at Kilgore College. I'm taking a Texas government class, so this is offering me to, an insight on what local government looks like. And that gives me the opportunity to speak. Being a father of three children and one on the way, I know my wife and I try to find activities for the summertime for my kids to do things. And I know the last minutes, the last, we talked about some summer activities for kids, and I wanted to provide one to the public. It's gonna be a rugby camp between July 10th and August 4th. I know rugby's currently a new sport here in Longview. La Terna's been playing it for a few years, but we have people in Shreveport, Tyler, Dallas, and other metroplexes that play rugby. The rugby camp is for kids between the ages of five and 18. It'll be at St. Mary's at 405 Hollybrook in Longview. And I think this would be a good opportunity for them to get out twice a week, get some practice in, and then on a Friday, get to play a game in front of their parents to show them how well they're doing. If ways to contact, we have an email, excuse me, a Facebook for Longview Youth Rugby, as well as an email for Christopher Bado, who will be coaching it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sheila Ann Maxey.
To the council, to city manager, and the mayor, and also attendees. I'm here to make a comment on the item number C on content agenda regarding the housing choice voucher. I have a relative who went to the housing department this year, and that relative was told that there was a waiting list for the housing assistance and that it wouldn't, nothing would be available until 2018. It is my understanding, according to HUD, that the city, each city receives funding on an annual basis, so I'd like to make a comment on that. The gentleman who made the comment on the homeless situation, the homeless situation is really bad here, and I'm not really sure if people really take it as serious as they should. There is need for housing, and I have been reading in the paper about the amphitheater, and I think probably that some of that, maybe there should be more focus on the housing situation here to accommodate the homeless people. Some people are homeless because of certain reason, but, certain reasons, but everybody that's homeless is not a lowlife, okay? And I don't think the people understand in that, okay? So I wanted to make a comment about that. And if you would take a look at Dallas, Texas, in 2003, they did an overhaul in their public housing. They cleared out the old housing and rebuilt it, put townhomes and residential homes, opened YMCA for childcare to help the people become self-sufficient. They enrolled in school, worked part-time. So they did a lot of effort in clearing up all the slum housing, okay? And my other comment is on, SWEPCO has been in a hearing in Austin this week regarding a rate increase, okay? And there has been some problems with utilities like AT&amp;T. I had a problem with Center Point a while back, and I tried to get information regarding the public utility franchises, and I was not helped, okay? And public utility recommended me to the city administration for information. And I did write a letter, I never got a response. So I found out today that you have a public record for the public utility franchises, and I would like to know how I can view that, okay? Because it should show the rates that are charged, what the city council approved, and I would like to view that information, okay? And so, and then I have one other thing I would like...
Ma'am, your time is, the buzzer's gone off.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll save this. Okay, thank you.
We'll be here in a couple of weeks again. That's all the speaker cards I have for citizen comment. Now, I have a number of speaker cards on the zoning issue that I'm gonna call it on the zoning, but if you hear her speak about something other than the zoning issue, you may do so and fill out a card later. Would anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I wanted to bring your attention...
Just one second, excuse me, one second. We know you, but please state your name and your address.
Sorry, Megan Tyler. I live in District 1, 2021 Majestic Pace.
Thank you.
Sorry. I wanted to bring it to your attention, as I did last weekend when I saw Mr. Wright at one of the fests in the city. It's public information not being adhered to which doesn't promote fairness and transparency in the community. On the subject of the boards and commissions, the city website clearly states that anyone who wishes to apply should do so by June 1st. It was my understanding, per Mr. Wright, that the meeting was held to discuss who might be on the board June 1st at around 2:00 PM. Per what Mr. Wright said, so when it typed up applications and suggestions, however it may work, to make it easier for you all to make your decisions, essentially cutting off whoever might apply later in the day. This was done some days beforehand, again, per what Mr. Wright said. So essentially, the deadline wasn't June 1st, it was in late May. I'm not excusing applying at the last minute, but as long as applications are supposed to be open, they're supposed to be open. I'm asking that the council consider any new applicants that turned in their application on June 1st, and in the future, updating the website to reflect accurate information as well. If a date change is needed, post on various social media outlets and make it known in some way to the community. I would also hope that the city government is being as upfront and honest as possible regarding the tornado sirens. This is a big thing in our community, and our citizens are very concerned, and they take it seriously, and I do understand things happen, but we need to really be looking at this. We cannot sit around and play the blame game. We need to take action to make sure this doesn't happen again. I expect the mayor to be respectful to our citizens despite any type of circumstance because this is the position he signed up for, as you all did. I expect our city staff is working diligently on a resolution on why some of our sirens didn't work and figuring out what's going on. I expect a press release, which by the way, was a great one last week regarding them. I really appreciated the honesty on the next update. I would like to thank you guys for serving. I know it's been difficult in the past two weeks with the tornado, and it's great to see the community come together. I really appreciate everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Excellent. We're now at the public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on what we've been doing since the last time we met. Last Friday, we did graduate two new officers from these Texas Police Academy over in Kilgore, Kilgore College. Officer Zachary Atkinson and Officer Edward Oden graduated from the academy, and we'll be getting them into their, into their field training here very soon. It's summertime, the kids are out of school. This is always a fun time. We get the opportunity to host several different camps during the year. This week, we have our Pine Tree Safety Hero Camp going on, and we have roughly about 14 students that are, 17 students that are enrolled in this summer camp, and gives us the opportunity to go out and interact with the children and kind of show them some of the equipment that we use and help, help educate them a little better on the, on the police department. We also have our summer camp going on this week at La Terna University. We have 14 students enrolled in that camp. They are getting a whole host of different demonstrations this week, and today had the opportunity to come down to the station and take a tour and had the opportunity to visit with them, so that was a good thing. This morning, we commissioned three new officers, two of which were the officers that graduated from the academy, Officer Edward Oden and Officer Zachary Atkinson, and then we added a third one in there, Officer Matthew Cooper, who's a certified officer that comes for, comes to us from Titus County with several years of experience. So we got three new commissioned officers that'll be hitting the streets in their field training here in the very near future. This week, we also have 28 women that have signed up for our Women's Safety Course, and they're about halfway through their safety course. And again, I've been showing them a little bit about how we operate and putting them in some different situations that, that officers are encountered, and they're having a, having a great time in this course as well. I know there's been a lot, we saw some pictures of the storm damage. Just kind of like to kind of update a little bit about what we were faced with at the very onset of the storm. I know Chief Steelman and I have been working to compile a list of the, of all the damage that occurred during the storm, but this is, every officer's worst nightmare, when the lights go out directing traffic at the major intersections. Right from the very beginning, we had recorded that we had 44 power lines that were reported down. Four streets we had that were completely blocked by live power lines, and we lost lights at 21 intersections without any type of functioning traffic control device. So you can see, I listed some of the major intersections that we were without power, and the officers had to get out there and direct traffic. And I really want to thank our citizens. We had no major accidents at any of these intersections due to, due to the power being out. But at the same time, I'd still like to, to educate our, our community, and we'll continue to do this. When the lights do go out, if there's a signal malfunction, there's no other traffic control device there, portable stop signs or anything like that, or no police officer directing traffic, then the intersection becomes what we call an open intersection, and then it becomes a four-way stop, and drivers should approach those intersections like that. But all in all, we had, very pleased with the, with the traffic flow and some of the issues that came up, and want to thank everybody for their patience while the electricity was coming up and we were shifting different resources around to cover the major intersections. Yesterday, as many of you may have heard, we had one of our officers that was involved in a motorcycle accident, and I'd like to ask the council and the citizens to join me in keeping that officer and his family and your thoughts and prayers as he recovers from his, from his injury yesterday. So it was Officer Rodney Smith, a veteran officer of the police department, and I know he will appreciate the prayers and the support from the community. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things that have been happening in the fire department recently. First and foremost, we, we've completed our wrap-up of our annual Muscular Dystrophy Association Field the Boot campaign. We kicked that off a while back. Mrs. Harrow was there gracious enough to put the first amount of money into the boot, and I'm happy to report back to you that our Longview Professional Firefighters Association brought in $71,234 for our local community, which is, which is great. You can clap for that. This is, this is a partnership that we participate with, with the Longview Professional Firefighters Association and the department itself. President Tony Marshall's in the room, so thanks, Tony, for this partnership. It's been successful and growing and getting bigger every year. But again, I'm amazed at how generous our community is in coming forward every year and increasing that number. It definitely impacts local kids here in our community, and we're thankful for that. We're thankful to be a part of it. We recently experienced a couple of retirements of tenured employees. Kent Moore served the city for 28 and a half years. He was one of the original people that came over with the ambulance service when the city took it over from La Terna University. He served as a shift training officer on A Shift, and we wish Kent the best in his future endeavors. And also, the, the next day, we recognized the service of Fire Marshal Johnny Zachary. Johnny served the city for 23 and a half years and ended in the Fire Marshal's office, assigned to Fire Administration. And we certainly wish both of these gentlemen a long and successful career post-city life. And we've already talked about a little bit how the weather, the severe weather on May the 28th and the subsequent tornado impacted the city services. This is just a little synopsis of how an event like that impacts the fire department. For a 48-hour period on the 20, the 28th, the 29th, through the morning of the 30th, the fire department answered 208 calls for service, which is about double what we normally would have experienced in that timeframe. As you can imagine, the part of the city was in quite a bit of disarray, so ultimately that is going to impact emergency services. Some of the more notable calls that the fire department responded to in that timeframe were 15 rescues for victims in various scenarios. These were people that were potentially trapped in their house because a tree fell through, and they couldn't find their way out. There were several people that might have been in an elevator at a bad time when the power went out, and now they're stuck in the elevator. There were a couple of car wrecks that were due to the severe weather. People driving through rising water, which we commonly see in our common flood prone, flood-prone areas, notably the High Street underpass and the Green Street underpass. People are always gonna try and make that trip through there, and I promise you, they're gonna make it about halfway and sink pretty quick. Fortunately, none of these people were injured or suffered any serious, any serious injuries, and certainly no fatalities, and we're certainly thankful for that, especially on the heels of seeing what happened in Canton and Van Zetten County here recently. We, we experienced 13, 13 storm-related structure fires. These were lightning strikes such, and those actually started first thing in the morning. It didn't take the tornado to start this. The lightning that was popping off from the intermittent thunderstorms that were happening were wreaking havoc on several of our residential structures here in town. We actually experienced a couple of commercial building fires and one small fire in a hotel that fortunately stayed small. 30 fires in electrical equipment, as you can imagine, 76 calls for power line down, and I'd be willing to say that's not a, that's probably about a third of what actually happened. There was so much damage to the electrical infrastructure here in town that that was a, that was a common theme. And then 28 calls for public service. This was people that, again, might have had a hole in the roof or, you know, just needed some assistance with one thing or another in, in light of what happened with the storm. So we talked about how the citizens were a victim of the storm, so let's talk a little bit about how the city itself was a victim of the storm because that's, that's exactly what happened with our early warning system. So here's a, a map of our early warning system. Best-case scenario, everything's working fine, all 20 siren locations sounding, everything's kind of hitting its radius for, for notification across the city. This is pre-storm. The first Wednesday after the storm, we quickly noticed that we had some, some damage to three of our sirens that did not rotate. They made the sound, but they didn't rotate, which decreases their effectiveness. So we knew about that when we went into this most recent Wednesday to do some additional testing of our system, and as you can see, it, it got even worse. And all of these are due to equipment failures. This most recent one happened because of a repeater failure that, that was experienced in public safety communication. So real quickly, I'll do a quick explanation, and I'm not the siren tech, but when that siren system is activated, there's a three-click process that dispatcher activates and sends a radio signal to all 20 of those sirens around the city. When public safety communications began to experience lightning strikes and power surges, that repeater system, that process got interrupted, which is, best we can surmise is why some people heard the sirens go off and some didn't because that, that message sending process was interrupted in the height of the storm. And then that same power surging caused the ultimate damage that caused the repeater to fail on this most recent test that we did on Wednesday. So... So now some good news in terms of this. We've been working all day. When we first started trying to reach out to our contractors to see about getting the system completely restored, we were being told it could be as much as a couple to a few weeks. Because of some diligent work on behalf of Chief Bates, our Assistant Chief of Operations who oversees this process, we're going to have both of our contractors in town tomorrow. That's the local contractor, the guy that actually is going to fix the radio issue. They're waiting on a part that's going to be drop shipped here tomorrow, so hopefully they'll make some progress on that, which if, if it works, it should make that problem back up, okay? So if we can get that, that repeater replaced, our intent is to have this piece of it solved, pending any other further, any further things that we can't, we can't proceed right now. The other issue of the three sirens that didn't rotate, that contractor has to come out of Oklahoma, Tulsa, Oklahoma to be exact. He's the only licensed person that can service those siren heads, and he's the one that was really telling us it was going to be two to three weeks just because of the demand for him. So he's told us that he will actually be in Longview tomorrow to start the process of inspecting and trying to fix the three that didn't rotate. So hopefully by tomorrow, we'll be in a lot better position with at least knowing what the outcome or what the forecast is for getting our system back to one-hundred percent. Tentatively, and I'm throwing this out there very tentative, our goal is if everything goes right and we get all the parts and all the right people in town to start fixing our system, is that next Wednesday at noon, weather permitting, we're going to try to test those repairs once again, so that we have a good glimpse of what the status is of our system. That's all we can do. We can make the repairs, and then we need to test it. So that's going to put it three Wednesdays in a row where we've tested this system to find out where the problems are and ultimately, hopefully, where the fixes have come. So, any questions on that? It's a very complex process, and the, the sad thing is, we're dependent on outside people to come in and work on our system, and we have really no control over that. So again, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the work that happened today to get that to where it's going to take place tomorrow at the soonest. Code Red, this is a service that still works. It works all the time. If you will register for it, you will get a phone call, like I did the day of the storm, the twenty-eighth. I had a phone call through my cellphone when I was standing on the front porch and not hearing the siren closest to my house go off, because it was also affected. But I had a phone call notification to let me know that there was severe weather in the area, okay? So Code Red is a free service. You can register for that at longviewtexas.gov/CodeRed. It's a free service. And especially in the meantime, while our siren system is questionable, I would highly recommend that you sign up for this as a backup plan. Any questions on that? I mean, that's, I keep saying that one, and I'm going to keep saying it. Our, our sign-ups are increasing, I'm grateful for that. I think we're up to thirty-six thousand residents that have now participated with this, so that number is climbing. So as long as it keeps telling me that this is doing some good to say this every council meeting, I'm, I'm going to keep on preaching it. The Longview Fire Department has a hiring process that opened this past Monday. You can go to our website. We're taking applications for firefighter, paramedic, and fire printers one and two. More information is available either through the fire department's website or the city's Human Resources Department's website. So we encourage anyone that's interested in a career, a very rewarding career in the fire service, to check that out. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, that was a little lengthy.
Yeah, that's good. Appreciate all the updates. Thank you so much. Information is very valuable to us. We're not at the consent agenda? Any items councilite pulled off for separate discussion? All approved? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're not to zoning? Public hearing held to consider application PD seventeen dash zero four. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard. The first item that we're going to be looking at is a public hearing to be held to consider application PD seventeen oh four filed by Yolanda Barron requesting a rezone of approximately six-point-eight acres in abstract one-eighty-six D Sanchez survey tract twenty-two, section five, from agriculture to planned development commercial, located east of Gilma Road, north of George Ritchie. As you may remember, this is a case that came before us, a couple of council members at co. It was Z seventeen oh-two, and at that time, there were some concerns about the broadness that was allowed under the heavy commercial zoning, and you guys asked us to take it back and recommend it to Planning and Zoning Commission with a planned development. So, that's what we did. P and Z recommended it, and I'm here to answer any questions.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, comments? Mr. Wright?
Michael, um, I just want to say, I'm not sure who Ms. Barron is, but I just want to say I appreciate you working with these, with the folks in planning and zoning and getting this taken care of. Sorry to delay you, but thank you for working with them.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Have a public hearing to consider application S one-seven dash zero-two. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. This public hearing is held to consider application S seventeen oh-two filed by Amy Cog requesting a specific use permit to allow for an indoor amusement in a general retail zoning district for lot three, block one, Park Place, located at nineteen oh-five West Loop Twenty-One, Suite sixty-three. As you may remember, specific use permits are required in general retail to allow us an opportunity for oversight when we have uses that may or may not be compatible. It just gives us that opportunity for oversight. You know, general retail is generally adjacent to residential areas, so it just gives us that opportunity to look at it on a case-by-case basis. You know, generally, indoor amusement in the past has been considered something that might be a little more, you know, intensive as far as traffic and noise and so forth. In this particular situation, what they're asking to do is an escape room, and that is something that we're seeing more and more of in, in larger communities and, and kind of what the escape room concept is. You go in, they kind of lock you in, and then there's different clues and things that you have to go through, and it's kind of a game scenario. There's a time limit, and it's kind of a fun activity. So we're glad to see those kind of things come into Longview, and, and P and Z and staff recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments?
Michael.
Mr. Moore.
This just applies to Suite sixty-three, correct? Not the whole tract?
Correct. Correct, just the suite.
Mr. Burton?
Where you're talking about locking them in, is there still easy access to escape the building if there's a problem?
Yes, they'll still have to meet all the same fire code and emergency access and everything. They can't truly lock them in where they can't get out.
Anyone else? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Now to public hearing, consider M one-seven dash zero-one. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. This is a request to amend Article seventeen and twenty-two of the zoning ordinance to restrict the number of individuals who may occupy a one-family dwelling or a single-family dwelling unit. Please bear with me as I read through the staff report. It is lengthy, but I think this is an important issue that, that requires that. As you may know, the, the Planning and Zoning Department has been tasked with clarifying the zoning ordinance for dwelling units and single housekeeping units. Staff along with council members have received complaints regarding this issue as far as homes being leased out by the room that were located in single-family neighborhoods. Upon investigation, it was determined that the zoning ordinance lacked clarity and was inconsistent on the issue. Currently, the zoning ordinance defines a family as any number of individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit in which not more than four individuals are unrelated by blood, marriage, or adoption. Also, it defines a one-family dwelling as a detached building having accommodations for and occupied by not more than one family, or by one family and not more than four boarders and lodgers. Based on the current definition of family in one-family dwelling, the code would allow potentially up to eight unrelated people within a one-family dwelling. In order to clarify the code, staff has suggested amending the definitions of one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, and dwelling, and dwelling unit. The current zoning ordinance defines one-family dwelling as a detached building having accommodations for and occupied by not more than one family, or by one family and not more than four boarders and lodgers. Staff is proposing to amend the definition to a detached building having accommodations for and occupied by more, not more than one family. The zoning ordinance defines a two-family dwelling as a detached building having separate accommodations for and occupied by not more than two families, or by two families and not more than four boarders or lodgers. Staff is proposing to amend the definition to a detached building containing not more than two dwelling units sharing a common separation, having separate accommodations for and occupied by not more than one family per dwelling unit. Dwelling unit is defined as a building or portion of a building which is arranged, occupied, or intended to be occupied as living quarters, and includes facilities for food preparation and sleeping. Staff is proposing to amend the definition to a building or portion of a building which is arranged, occupied, or intended to be occupied as living quarters, and includes facilities for food preparation and sleeping for a family. To further, to further clarify that a dwelling unit can only contain a family, which is defined as any number of individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit in which not more than four individuals are unrelated by blood, marriage, or adoption, staff is proposing to create a definition for single housekeeping unit. This definition would, is proposed as any household whose members are an interactive group of persons jointly occupying a dwelling unit, share a single lease agreement, including joint access to and use of all common areas, including living, kitchen, and eating areas within the dwelling unit, ensuring household activities and responsibilities such as meals, chores, expenses, and maintenance, and whose makeup is determined by the members of the unit, rather than the landlord, property manager, or other third party. This does not include a boarding or rooming house. Also, staff is proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance to add language that allow for a two-year amortization period for non-conforming dwelling units. These proposed changes will help better define that a dwelling unit is intended for only one family within the code and allow staff to make clear determinations. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This does require public hearing, which is now open, and I have multiple speaker cards on this issue. So I will call the speaker cards up, one by one. Remember that you have limited time. When the buzzer goes off, please finish your comments, and this is no particular order. Heather Herzig?
Hello. I'm a, I'm Heather Herzig. I have been a property manager for ten years. I own property. I'm the president of the apartment association, and I live in a neighborhood where their house is an issue. Being in property management, we have to go through city inspections yearly from the fire department and from the city itself. These house, these dwellings do not. Fires can happen. Our, our fire extinguishers are inspected, and in these houses, they are not. I live in a neighborhood, one house down from me. This house has somebody new in it every day. It has rats, raccoons, broken windows, no electricity, homeless people living there off Highway eighty. I've had prostitutes having sex in the front yard, and the city cited them several times for not mowing. They fight over bicycles, grocery carts, furniture in the yard. In fact, I have pictures on my phone from today where there's a, a soiled mattress in the front yard and grass, and a citation from the city. The people in this house come and go. They fight in the streets. I have a three-year-old nephew that I'm raising, and he sees this. In our neighborhood, there are several young children that see this, and I don't think that that's okay. I've bought my house, I've lived there thirteen years, and this house has become a nuisance. The owner also has this house listed as a business. With no electricity and no windows and no maintenance being done, it is a hazard and is definitely not an office. I have the pictures from the city being cited today on my phone and the condition of the house. I just want to, I want the people that own these houses to have to go through the inspections and make sure those houses are safe. If this house was to catch fire, it would probably catch several houses on fire in my neighborhood, and I just think that we need to make sure that people are held responsible for this. The lady that's renting the house is renting it again to prostitutes, homeless people, people that have just gotten out of prison, and that are fighting again and doing drugs and doing drug deals out in the neighborhood in front of all of our neighbors to see. Thank you. Do you want to see the pictures?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. Diane McFarlane?
Hello, I'm Diane McFarlane, and I have been a resident of Longview for almost thirty years. I have both my business here. I'm an attorney, and I do all family law. I've also resided here as well. I had received a call earlier this week from a friend of mine who I had known through a businesswomen's organization that we had both participated, participated in for many, many years, and when she called me, she was in a medical facility and was about to be released and had actually been living in her car because she had no job at the time. She had lost her job, and she did not have, she was homeless, so there was an issue in terms of them releasing her, that she was not going to have a roof over her head. I am familiar with the shared living arrangements that have been set up in Longview, and certainly what Heather had talked about, that shouldn't be happening in our town, but there are many shared living arrangements that are available in our community, so through people that I know that have good shared living arrangements, she was able to find a room that's very affordable, and I wish that the council had time to actually see what's happening in the good shared living arrangements. So I was, this is the first time I've ever been to a city council meeting, and to hear that already you've had several agenda items, and I see more agenda items later that deal with housing, I think that if shared living is handled appropriately, and if you have somebody who actually cares about the residents, and that they have purchased a home, and hopefully, the, the ones that I have seen are actually being acquired in very safe neighborhoods, they're being fixed up. I think that they're actually, if you were to drive by them, they're probably some of the better-maintained homes that are on the street, and everything is provided in a very home-like setting. So, I think that for, in the type of work that I do, there are several people who've had family law issues where they have been economically affected, and they can't afford to go get a, you know, a, they can't afford to get into a nice house here in Longview on their own. So, being able to sort of pool the resources that some of the lower-income citizens of our town have, and I don't think that we're talking about, well, I know we are not talking about, you know, the prostitutes and the drug dealers, you know, these are, it could very well be me, and the shared living arrangements that I'm familiar with, they are a place that I would recommend what a, a person that I care about to live in. So, I'm very concerned that with the housing situation and problems that we have in Longview, that if you take the ability away to have shared living arrangements, it's going to make it even harder for people who have fixed incomes or low incomes.
Thank you. Shirley Shelton?
Shirley Shelton, I live on North Park Circle in Northridge Hills, and I live right across the street from one that's been fixed up and renting, for sure, four people, sometimes five, and there's many, as many as six different cars out there. And it was fixed up, and it's not maintained as well as I would say the rest of the houses in the neighborhood are, and I'm in the yard. I don't know what's going on inside. But last year, I went before the appraisal board, and I own, like I said, the house right in front of it, and at that time, I owned the house on the end of the street, and I protested the value of my house because of this multi-tenant housing situation in a single-family residential area. And they reduced my house five thousand, and the one at the end of the street, five thousand. I also recommended to all the neighbors that they go in, and they protest that and get their taxes reduced. Well, if everybody, every time this happens in a neighborhood, in a nice neighborhood, goes in and does that, it's going to cost the city, the school, the county, the fire department, the police department, everybody money, because you won't be receiving as high taxes as you were receiving. So I think you need to look at that. I mean, I don't want to, you know, it's somebody that really needs a place to stay, but if these people are paying around five hundred a month or more, then they should be able to get in some kind of an apartment. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kelly Burton? And might I remind speakers to please state your name and your address when you come to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you. I need that reminder. I've never done this before. I'm Kelly Burton, and I live at eighteen-twelve North Park Circle. I want to say thank you for hearing us today, and thank you for all you do. I don't know what you do, but I know it's a lot. I'm speaking in behalf of Gretchen Tucker's Homes, multi-zoning. Let's see. I was, I was homeless, so I'm one of those people you want to hear. I was attacked six years ago, and I was on crutches, and I came to Longview for safety. I went to Highway eighty and Community Health Corps, and the biggest piece of getting people off the street to me is unconditional And the biggest piece of getting people off the street, to me, is unconditional love and acceptance and community. I'm in six years' deliverance from my bad choices: drugs, alcohol, cigarettes, nicotine, and abuse. I give my testimony today for the police cadets, and I get to tell them about that side, and just cool, God's cool. I like that. I'm in ministry, I was in ministry with New Beginnings Baptist Church and Celebrate Recovery, and so God uses all that hurt, you know, for, He gives it back. Currently, I'm in ministry with Jesus Burger on Mission Ministries, and I serve at, I'm the connect person at Treasure Church in White Oak, Texas, for Pastor Allen Johnson. Gretchen's houses, I can't speak for all of them, but she cares. She cares. She handles stuff very quickly. Nah, we're not perfect. I got a dandelion war in the front yard going on. I care about my home. I'm winning, by the way. But dandelion roots have, they're huge. So, you know, let's see, nervousness, I'm sorry. She didn't get paid to do this. You know, I've called her, "Community guys," that's, we say we want a homeless task force and that we want it in homelessness, and we want to see them in places, but it takes a special person. She puts them in places, she does, she puts them to where they fit, and it doesn't always work. I have placed a lot of people in housing, there's, for CR, and so I know it doesn't always stick. And I've been a homeowner, so I will understand both sides. And her heart is, her slogans are "Be Nice," and everyone deserves a beautiful place to lay their head. I just want both sides to come together in the middle. It's an asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Robert Lamont?
Howdy, Jim. My name's Robert Lamont. I live at 1604 North 10th Street. Little concerned today, in speaking in support of this item, I was very interested in hearing the opposition. As I was listening to Ms. McFarlane, I visited her law office before. She lives right around the corner from my home, employs a friend of mine. Actually, and I think it's interesting, her office is right by a duplex, which is also a menace to my neighborhood. But, but once again, I don't want to talk about double-family dwellings. I'd like to stay on the topic of single-family dwellings. I live in a single-family dwelling across the street from a home that I grew up in. My mother still lives there. I come from a rather large family, and, and my neighborhood has, has, over the last couple of decades, has turned from a single-family dwelling, single-owner, to possibly a single-owner, but multifamily dwelling. I called attention to the problem in my neighborhood several months ago. I had a home, a beautiful home, with three mailboxes in the front, and my question was, how does the city allow this to happen? With it being single-family, it's not a duplex community, it's not a triplex community, it's a single-family dwelling. My heart is with, with, with people who are homeless. I'm not trying to drive folks out of, of their homes. I realize we're trying to provide shelter for any number of folks, but I think that's, and if you don't do it, who, who will? Well, our churches, our, our administration with the city, any number of folks will help with these problems. So I'm not trying to drive the homeless out of my neighborhood. I've reached out to the people in these multifamily dwellings. I've been a good neighbor, and I've, one of the tenants is a wonderful neighbor. I talked to him about this, because after I spoke to zoning, my picture's in the paper, and I'm wondering what, you know, who's thinking, well, he's, he's this way, so he has no heart for the homeless. Folks, I've, I've worked as a public school teacher for years. I've worked in, I'm from Longview, excuse me, I'll end this briefly. I've had a lot of contact with people who needed help. I need help. The help that I need is that I need the city to follow what seems to be an obvious code. It's single-family dwellings. These are not to be broken up into individual units, multi, multi, multi-non-related-person dwellings. Forgive me for going over time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Byron Casey Dent, or Bron Casey Dent? Oh, sorry, man.
Good evening, Mayor.
How you doing, sir?
City Council, citizens. I'm Bron Casey Dent. I'm here to address the, for Gretchen Tucker and the housing there. I do outreach ministries around Longview and street ministries, and I deal with the homeless. I'm familiar with a lot of you folks here. And I also have rented various rooms from Gretchen Tucker. I have placed people, and Kelly, I knew Kelly when she was still on the streets and in House of Hope, and we've got her on staff at church and other places. She's working, she's awesome. She's awesome on the streets, and she's helping people with a heart of love, and she's fighting this homeless thing. We need to get these people off the street primarily. We have restrictions, I understand, and codes that we need to live by, but we need to open our hearts first, and we need to understand that when somebody opens their heart and their home for these people, and she does it with the utmost safety, cleanliness, and care, when, when there's someone in her home that needs something, she's right there. Like I say, I actually have one of these rooms myself that I keep, and it is a home. It is a home. We are a family. We eat together, a lot of us, we go to church together. And I do, when we had our storm the other day, we cooked hundreds of burgers, and we passed them out in that neighborhood to you folks who were living around us who didn't have electricity. We try to reach out also. I'm just one of the tenants, and I want to speak for her on behalf of those properties. I understand that we need to work together, and we're just here to share love and support. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Ms. Maxie, Shilianne Maxie, are you going to speak again? Is that legal?
Yes, I would like to say that when I first heard about this, I saw it in the newspaper where the gentleman complained about, one day, he started seeing the mailboxes and stuff, and all the different people on the other side of his house. The homeless situation is a terrible situation, okay, all across America, Longview too. And like I was mentioning before, the Housing Authority here, Longview Economic Development owns property, and I think that there should be more housing bill to assist the homeless. Also, people who live in single-family subdivisions, they do not invest their money, okay, in a single-family subdivision to see their neighborhoods turn into multifamily housing, which results in cars being parked across the lawns or on the street, which is in violation of city ordinance, for people to park their cars across the street, across the lawn, and all of that. And people invest in single-family subdivisions, and they put their money in those divisions, and they want to keep their, they want to keep their neighborhoods where their property value will stay up in the event that they decide when they get older, they sell their property. But not for developers or people who want to make quick money to come in and change the structure of a home just so they can make some quick money. There are places where, or that those developers can buy particular sections or lots for multifamily housing. That can be done. And I think you have to consider both sides, the homeless people and the people who invest, you know, and work hard for what they get. You have to consider both sides, because you couldn't go put a multifamily home in Wildwood, you couldn't go and put it in Huntington Park, and you sure couldn't put it in northeast Longview out by, in the Doris McQueen area, okay? Now, what she was, the lady was saying about the shared housing, yes, that can take place, but usually when that situation occurs, it's a private nonprofit organization, and the people who live in those places are referred to those particular locations, and you don't have all this writ ref. I sit up and watched the house that had been in my neighborhood for over 40 years, and squatters possessed the house, tore it up, perpetrators, nothing happened to them, you know? The woman's property is torn up. She did what she's supposed to do. Her house was locked. It had doors on it, it had windows on it. She was following her part, but the perpetrators are allowed to descend upon people's property and do what they want to with it, okay? So we have to have the city protect our property, because Texas is a stand-your-ground state.
Thank you, ma'am. Gretchen Tucker?
Good evening. I'm Gretchen Tucker, and I've been a resident of the community for over 30 years. I own rental property, some of which are the shared living homes. I've been doing this since 2012. Although my properties are not Section 8, all the homes are held to the same standards as the federal government had properties for their safety. The local fire stations have been given a list of the homes and their areas in case of fire or medical emergencies. The shared living homes are large and established neighborhoods where the residents can feel safe and secure. The homes are impeccably maintained. Each residence has a private space, each person living there, but they do share the common areas, the kitchens, the laundry, living areas, bathrooms, and contrary to what was reported in the newspaper, they are not separate apartments. These aren't homes for sex offenders, parolees, they're not halfway houses. These are respectful people on disability, retirees on fixed income, people who are working through a crisis and are starting over, elderly, veterans, schoolteachers, divorced dads, restaurant workers, many others. Some have suffered an illness or other trauma in their lives and lost their homes. All the residents have a criminal background check. Over 75% of the residents do not own their own car and rely on public transportation. Several of my residents are referred from the agencies listed on Mayor Max's Task Force to fight homelessness. Some of the residents have come from some of the other homes in the other part of town where their neighbors don't complain. And they've told me that their windows were nailed shut, they had to block their doors at night because they were afraid. They charged, they were charged an extra $15 a week for air conditioning, even though the window units were donated to the landlords by a city agency. Many times, it did not have running water, and the city did nothing about those issues. The reason we're here today is because the people that are fortunate enough to live in the quiet, safe neighborhoods want to deny those rights to others. I picked the nicer neighborhoods, and I screened the people. The homes are nice, the yards are nice. It's merely the thought of what could be in there. They're all very nice people. If you didn't know, and if I was not so honest, when the neighbors came over and asked me, "Hi, did you buy the house, and what are you going to be doing?" They probably would never know. There's two houses, mostly the one on North Park Circle is the one that has caused this, all the concern, but all the other ones in town, there has not ever been a complaint or an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marjorie Letersky?
Good evening. I'm Marjorie Letersky. I live in the neighborhood where it is well-maintained for the multifamily. Gretchen is the landlord. I am here to tell you why multifamily homes are good for our community. I have voiced my opinion at two town hall meetings, where I have told our city officials that there is not enough affordable housing for people who are elderly and disabled under the age of 62. The ones that are the elderly, for affordable housing, have an average of two years to wait to get into a apartment. One remark was, "I don't think we can do anything about that." Well, today, I think you can. In 2012, Gretchen Tucker remodeled a building across the street from my home, 111 Branch Street. Each bedroom has their own key. There's three baths. They share a living room quarters. The kitchen is fully stocked for them to cook anything that they need, and this is a result of not failing after you come out of any program from Highway 80 or any other type of rehab program. If you take somebody and put them in an apartment with no furniture and nothing to cook with, you're setting them up for a fail. The tenants we have met want to become a part of this community. I fear that the ordinance that you are considering could stand in their way and in the way of others who live in a group setting, including group homes for people with disability, that would be wrong. Here at 11 East Branch, these friends have become a part of our community. Kelly did a National Crime Watch me, party a few years ago. So we got to know all of these people living in this building, and other neighbors got to know them also. They also help Pete and I when we're at need. They've taken our garbage can out, they've helped me move furniture that I can't move within my own home. They're somebody that just wants to be a part of our community. And Gretchen called me the night of the storm, and my landline wasn't working, so I didn't get her message right away. I got it the following day, and she wanted to know if those people were okay. She wanted to know if they had food. So Gretchen is a wonderful person to be your landlord.
Thank you. Polly Dougdale?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilpeople. I live at 2404 Street here in Longview, Texas. It's a home owned by Gretchen Tucker. I first had known Gretchen for a long time because I worked in the legal field. In 2012, I had a medical condition, and I ended up homeless, having never even imagined that could happen to me. I ended up at House of Hope, and then Fredonia House, and became involved with the Community Health Corps. And when I was released... room, laundry room, patio out back, a big backyard. I know my neighbors on two sides of me. The other residents in the house includes a doctor who works here twice a month and doesn't want to stay in a hotel room and she feels safe to leave her things locked in her room at our house. One of our tenants is a lady that works at Buckner as a cook. She unfortunately is in a situation where she's living a domestic violence situation and needed a place to live. We have a young man that came out of the HOD program. HOD? Yeah, that's it. Who now sits on a board of church. He's involved with the Highway Eighty. He's continued to be involved with HOD. He's got a job working for Alpine Cleaners. There's another guy that works at one of the local restaurants. And we get together as a family. We had twenty people at our house at Thanksgiving because we all had friends and families come there and visit with us and share a meal. Memorial Day, we had a cookout. We were lucky we didn't lose power during the storm. So we tried to reach out to other members of other houses to see if they were all right. And anytime we have a problem, we can call Gretchen. I have her personal number. I can reach out to her and let her know. Her maintenance staff is wonderful. They respond immediately and they try to keep our yards up. And when there's extra work to be done, we do it ourselves because this is not a living situation. This is a home. And if these restrictions are placed, I may end up homeless again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no more speaker cards. Anyone else like to speak and fill out a card? Did someone raise their hand? Okay, okay. Come ahead first, ma'am, and then we'll get you Ms. Webb in just a minute. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Lang. I'm actually a resident of Longview, Texas, been here for like forty-three years. I work for Community Health Corps. I'm the Housing Coordinator for Community Health Corps, been doing it about eighteen years. So my, I'm definitely an advocate for homeless clients with mental illness. So not only do I utilize Gretchen Tucker, but there are other landlords in the Longview area that offer shared housing. And safe, affordable housing is very hard to find in Longview, Texas. So these type of houses are needed, they're needed, because I participate with the point in time count every year and the homeless population is growing. So not only do we need this type of housing, if not, it's going to be a homeless situation in Longview and I don't know if we're, are we ready to handle that situation because we're already dealing with it now. So Gretchen is not the only landlord in Longview that does this type of housing. There are a lot of other landlords that offer that type of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please fill out a card for us, please? If you go to the back, fill out a card. Come forward.
Blessed Webb, North Park Circle. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Allen, Mr. Willard, I'm sorry. Please understand, this is not about Ms. Tucker. This is about the integrity of a neighborhood. You know, we all have a heart for those who are less fortunate. We all have a heart and want to do right by those in our community who are hurting. However, we also want to do right by our investment within the community. So far, Ms. Tucker has had a lot of accolades from residents of her homes. However, this has adversely affected our neighborhood. Perhaps, you know, if we had been informed, if it had been more open about what was going on, however, to have six residents who are renting rooms in what was once a single-family home, these are people that we do not know who they are. They come and they go. We have different cars on the street. So what was once a safe, secure neighborhood for the retired folks on our street and in our neighborhood and for the families with young children, suddenly we are addressing strange cars, strange people and feeling unsecure in where we are. That is not to say that we don't need to respond with love and kindness in helping those who are looking for homes and for housing. However, when you have, we need a clarification of what the single-family residential area code should be and it needs to be followed to the letter of the law. And that's what this is all about. When I say, "Single-family residential housing", what do you think of? What does your mind conjure? And that is a home with a family, not with a kitchenette and a bathroom in each room where there are not shared housing or shared communal household duties, but where each one does their own thing. That's not a single-family residence. That's a, an apartment complex. And so basically what my neighbors and I, I think you would find, we have a number here today, we're concerned not only about our home values, but also about the safety in our neighborhood and the fact of how this was done. It seemed to have been done without full disclosure, without, while it may have been a gap within the policy of the zoning, it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Very good. Now, the public hearing is still open. Counsel, discussion?
I, I just like to make a comment. I want to begin by saying that this has been very interesting to me for a number of reasons. Number one, this has been going on in our community for many, many years. This is a really slippery slope where we are right now. I don't think that it's our role as city council members to first define what a family is. Number two, I've not received a significant number of complaints from people that this is adversely affecting the masses. And again, I go back to saying that this has been going on for a long time, but now it's become a big deal. And I think the, the other part that really makes it the most interesting to me is that we live in a society where everybody is always about less government, less government. But it appears that in this situation, it's almost as if less government until it affects me in some way or another. And so I, I just, I wanted to really be clear on where I stand on this issue. I will be voting against it, but, because I think that we really need to evaluate this a little bit deeper before we just dive off of a cliff because everyone is affected. And I don't think that there's any way that we can actually make it stop. So that's just my position. Thank you.
Mrs. Shahara? Excuse me. I appreciate y'all, but we don't really need the clapping. This is what we're elected to do, so let us just speak, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to state my position, just like Kasia, and I am going to respectfully disagree with your position. But we need to have a open and honest discussion like we've just had tonight. I certainly agree and see throughout the community that affordable housing is an issue. There's no doubt about that. Since the time that I've been on council, we've supported several resolutions, supporting, bringing federal tax credits here to build. Hopefully, we will be getting two new facilities very soon. I totally agree and understand that affordable housing and homelessness is a very serious issue in our community. Mayor Mack has recently appointed a task force to address that issue. And as part of that issue, looking at what are we doing? Are our efforts improving this? Where do we need to focus so that we're not doing several, several different things that may or may not be helping and that we are helping in the right way? I do believe that this particular issue is not a not-in-my-backyard issue. When the first resident contacted me, I have several homes in my district that I have received complaints on where there are multifamilies living in a single-family residence. When the first individual contacted me, I said, "Well, let me check into that and I'll get back to you." And he said, "Well, how do you define 'single family'?" And I said, "Well", I mean, that seems obvious to me, how I would define "single family", but when we go back to our code, it doesn't support what I would necessarily define as "single family." I do believe that what we are currently allowing under our code is multifamily housing in a single-family zoning area and that needs to be addressed and corrected. I do believe that if there are many proponents here of allowing units that would have multifamily shared housing like we're talking about, that could be something that you come propose as a new zoning area, but that that should be specifically addressed and approved, not the approach that we've had, which has been, "There's nothing we can do about that. I'm sorry, that's in your single-family residence area. I think we need to back up, correctly define what that means, and then if changes need to be made, bring that forward, bring the community's support for that and then we can consider that correctly." I have had multiple neighborhoods contact me with issues. They have not been complaints about the individuals, the residents, but have been complaints about, like we heard, multiple mailboxes, parking issues. When you have six to, or more people living in a residence, that means parking on the street, parking in driveways, yards. And that does not create the type of neighborhood that we have been trying to promote. With all of our Crime Watch and neighborhood meetings, we have been trying to promote grassroots neighborhoods that get along and that work together. So I think it's very important that we support and respect the integrity of our single-family neighborhoods. I do very much agree that the desire to help homelessness and people in our community that need it is an asset. I mean, we need people that are willing to take their own time and resources to do those things and I respect that. And I believe that we can figure out a way to work together moving forward. This does not mean that you cannot have four people living together as a family unit. We had several people talk about how they were a family. You can have four unrelated individuals living as a single-family unit in a home. Is that right? Am I saying that right? So there's not, we could work together to make this, respect the integrity of the neighborhood, but also still be serving people that are in need. So I will be supporting, making this change this evening. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Birdle? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Michael. Does this impact the group homes that are already established with?
No. Under state law, group home is defined as a state-licensed facility for a protected class of citizens and those would not be regulated by zoning. So they would not impact any of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
As long as you're up there. And Ms. Ishahara said, "This would not preclude four individuals going in together to rent a home, a four-bedroom home, and they, they share in the rent, they share in the housekeeping duties, they share in the food purchase." This would still allow that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the, the key difference then is that scenario versus individual bedrooms that may have a separate exterior entrance, separate key locks, and they, they don't share in any of the household duties. Yes, they can use the living room and watch the same TV, but other than that, their individual renter is paying individual rents to an absentee homeowner.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Birdle?
Well, this is what I do for a living, is build single-family homes mostly, some commercial. And I've had numerous, numerous calls about this. Even before I was elected, I was made aware of these situations. And I look at the tax situation of what we're doing and, and I think, not in my backyard, you, you think, "Well, that, that's happening in every neighborhood. It's happening in everyone around here." I've checked into it. I've had numerous, numerous calls yesterday and today and, you know, it seems to be defeating the purpose of a single-family neighborhood to me. I just feel like that if you want to buy structures to do multifamilies or build something that you need boarding houses in or apartments in, that's where you need to build these structures at. I spent two stints on planning and zoning and it seems like if we go this route, we're throwing planning and zoning to the, under the bus as far as how we're being so restrictive on what we do in zoning issues. And to, to come back and, and start changing neighborhoods that are well-established, that have been there twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty years, just because there's a house for sale and we can get it at a, a good price and then we can start modifying it and moving more and more people in, it's a money issue to the people that are doing this, but to the people that live there, it's their homes, it's their investment. And to me, I'm degrading by not passing this, I'm degrading their investment that they have and that's hurting us as a city tax-wise because, like one of the ladies said, her property taxes went down because she argued this. None of us are against the homeless, you know, we all have compassion for that. Dr. Mack's situation, hopefully they will come up with some good remedies and, and stuff for that. But there are places that you can get subsidies and help to rent places, not just in single-family neighborhoods. So, you know, my situation is I'm, I'm for this ordinance. I probably was the first one to initiate this ordinance along with Ms. Ishahara's help and that's, that's kind of my stand on it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mayor? Ms. Wright?
Ms. Tucker, it sounds like you're doing a really great job with the houses that you're, you're doing this with. But, you know, I, we, if we vote for it, are we heartless? No, I don't think so. It's like everybody up here said, we're, we all have concern for the homeless people in this, in this community. But, you know, to be honest with you, do I want something like that in my single-family neighborhood? No, I don't. And I don't think it's right that these houses can be just set down in the middle of a neighborhood where these people have lived all their lives in single-family homes and then because the neighborhood's getting older and maybe the housing prices are coming down a little bit, somebody can take advantage of that and move something like this into the neighborhood. There's plenty of areas in the city where you can build a house like this and I think people could build houses like these and probably just do just about as well financially with them as they could by buying another, a house in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. So I'm also for the, the ordinance that's being proposed tonight and, but Ms. Tucker, I do want to say, I think you're doing a fine job, but unfortunately, there's other people who could do the same thing and might not do nearly as good a job as what you're doing.
Ms. Nadya, something else?
No, I was just thinking. I've, on both sides of the corn. Ms. Sabrina, I know the position you're in and how important it is, once you're making a referral out to someone needing. I have compassion for anyone. I, I thank God, I, I live in South Longview and fortunately, I, I live in a neighborhood where there's no broken windows and people are keeping their lawns mo, mode, but we also live in a community where this type of living is occurring. Now, can I go through my neighborhood and pick out the home? No, because they are well-maintained. I don't know if they're owned by you, Ms. Gretchen, but I also applaud you for it. But there are also some owners who are not keeping up their resident and it does become a problem in their neighborhood with the cars parked across the lawn and the windows are broken and it's just indeed a mess and an eyesore and the value of your home does decrease. Guys, this is, this is difficult. I mean, because there's a need for this type of resident and I don't think what we're trying to do as a council is stop the shared housing, but we're trying to provide some type of standards or restrictions that would allow people who own homes to be comfortable and know that the value of their homes will not decrease because of this, so.
Anyone else?
Can I ask a question?
I don't know if they're owned by you, Ms. Gretchen, but I also applaud you for it. But there are also some owners who are not keeping up their resident, and it does become a problem in their neighborhood with the cars parked across the lawn and the windows are broken, and it's just indeed a mess, and an eyesore, and the value of your home does decrease. Guys, this is, this is difficult. I mean, because there's a need for this type of resident, and I don't think what we're trying to do as a council is stop the shared housing, but we're trying to provide some type of standards or restrictions that would allow people who own homes to be comfortable and know that the value of their homes will not decrease because of this, so.
Anyone else?
Can I ask a question? Isn't it against the ordinance to, for cars to be parked on the street anyway?
Yes.
So that's just an example, and I'm just, I know that, I know, Chief, we've visited about it, I think, before, and I know staff goes through, and they cite people, I know in my district. So that's a great example of something that maybe we need to work harder on, you know, with that, from that perspective. But at the same time, you know, depending on who you're dealing with, I mean, there are a lot of variables to consider, but that's just one example of something.
Mr. Moore?
One final thing. Mrs. Lutersky, I'm the city official, I know you've attended all of my town hall meetings, and you have made that plea at every one of them, and I respect that. But this, this is an issue, it's difficult. I have not received a lot of phone calls. I've received a couple in favor of the amendments just today, but a, a, a single-family zoned neighborhood is just not the place for this type dwelling. I, I respect your, your views, and I agree with you 100%. We need more affordable housing in Longview, Texas, but we don't need it in established single-family residential areas. And I respect your opinion. I respectfully disagree with putting this type dwelling in a single-family home neighborhood. So I'm, I'm going to support this amendment.
I make a motion to approve the amendment as presented.
Is there a second? Wait, 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 wait. Can't do that yet. Public hearing must be closed. Public hearing is now closed.
I make a motion to approve the amendment as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now to action item, consider ordinance adopting the 2017 edition of the National Electrical Code published by the National Fire Protection Association. Mr. Sevasta.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weller. Like to ask the Council to consider amendment, amending Chapter 37 of the City of Longview Code ordinance to adopt the 2017 National Electrical Code, the NEC. The Texas Electrical Safety and Licensing Act requires the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulatory Regulation, TDLR, to adopt the revised National Electrical Code, the NEC, as the electrical code for the state of Texas. The 2017 NEC will be the minimum standard for all electrical work covered under the state law in Texas when adopted September 1st, 2017. We seem to have a mix-up. I'll, I'll just read it to you.
Okay.
September 1st, 2017, all Texas licensed electricians are required to adhere to TDLR and the minimum standard. The purpose, the practical safeguard, the, the purpose of this code is the practical safeguarding of persons and property from hazards arising from the use of electricity. The code is not intended as a design specification or an instructional manual for the untrained persons. I was brief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sevasta? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Out of the community interest, Mr. Moore?
I would like to echo the mayor's remarks on employee recognition. We, City of Longview, have the best city employees with whom I have ever worked. The work they have done since the tornado and storm has just been outstanding, and I know the sanitation and the street department, I probably for years will be at night dreaming about brush pile. But your, your work has been outstanding, and I know the citizens appreciate everything you have done and will continue to do. I'd also just like to make a brief comment about SWEPCO. I appreciate all the crews that SWEPCO brought in, and the fact that they were able to restore power to 103,000 customers in a matter of days is, is, is fantastic. So, anyway, accolades to them. Second, a reminder that City of Longview Historical Commission and Gray County Historical Commission will jointly host a historical marker seminar on Saturday, June 24th at 10:00 a.m. in our Development Services Building on South High. If you've ever been interested in seeing how a, a historical marker is placed and what is required in the application process, you need to, to be there on the 24th, and again, it's free.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Noddy?
Good evening, everyone. I echo Councilman Moore's sentiments with our first responders during the storm. Outstanding job to all the employees, as well as SWEPCO, and I did purchase a generator. Don't catch me.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you to staff for everything, and just a point of clarification, the City of Longview, we do not maintain the public utilities. Yeah, it was, you know, just for real, seriously. We pay SWEPCO just like everybody else. But anyway, thank you again to staff for everything that you, you've done during this, this time, and I am so grateful, and I found myself in church Sunday rejoicing, because at the end of the day, there were no fatalities, no injuries. And I get excited, and I get excited about the Lord as I sit here right now and think about it, because it could have been me, it could have been you, it could have been anybody. We stood at my parents' house and watched the visibility go to zero when it hit. So just be grateful, and, and more than anything, love one another. Have a good week.
Ms. Ishihara?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Birdle?
I want to thank Val Miller Services, they've put up with me for quite a while here, Michael, and Ingrid. They did a few things here lately that I really appreciate. They don't know about it, but I knew about it. And I want to thank Public Works. I've been giving Roland a heck of a run here lately, and he's been staying up with me, so, anyway, I'm glad everybody made it through the storm, and we're okay.
Thank you, Ms. Birdle. And Ms. Birdle, we're sorry for your loss. I know that you had a loss in your family.
That's okay.
We sure, prayers are with you, sir. Mr. Weller?
City pools and splash pads are open. There are two outdoor public pools and five splash pads. For hours of operation, reservation or location, go to longviewtexas.gov/parks. Longview's library Build a Better World Summer Reading Program kickoff party is tomorrow, Friday, June 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Don't miss that. Library has tons of free summer fun, movie night, trivia night, and a writer's workshop. Go to longviewtexas.gov/library for a complete list and calendar. The Veterans Plaza at Teague Park, please help honor Americans' veterans. It's so easy to donate, go to vetplaza.org. Told you, we're going to keep doing it until it's done, so just get used to that, or donate your $5. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Colin and Brad from Whose Line Is It Anyway are to perform at the Beltray Center on June the 10th. Gladwater Rodeo is June the 7th through the 10th. Longview Summer Boat Show at Maud Cobb is June 8th through the 10th. I'm not even going to say that. Poses and a Pint? The Old Horse Brewing Company and Longview Yoga Studio have paired up to offer Poses and a Pint Saturday, June 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Thank you all for that. I like it. And along this, out of the community interest, I need to say something to you. I want to do, I would like, with Council's indulgence, to add something to our agenda. You know, most of the times our meetings are quite short and concise, we do a pretty good job of getting in and out of here and taking care of city business. And I think since we started this employee recognition, I think it's been a wonderful thing, because we've been able to enjoy celebrating with the employees that do the behind-the-scenes work that no one appreciates, and no one really knows who they are, and putting names to faces, and I think that's very important. I'm going to continue to do that as long as I'm the mayor. I would also like to add something, that I would like to designate as community recognition, because I think there are people in this community that do stuff every single day that go unrecognized, and I think it's high time that we, as a community, recognize those people who take their time to do good and want no recognition for it. And so I'm going to add that to our council agenda, so I'll encourage you all, if you have recognition from a community that you would like to bring forth, please see me about that, and we will do that, because I truly feel like, when you have a giving community, and you have a community that steps out and steps up, the more we say thank you, the more others will catch on. It's a, it can be very infectious, and I want to see that happen, so with y'all's indulgence, we will add that to our agenda, and we won't make it long. Just quick few words to say thank you, as we do for our employees, and I think that will be something that our citizens will enjoy. I know I'll enjoy that, because I have lots of people doing lots of neat things in this community. This is a pretty pertinent survey tonight with all the discussion we had. I didn't plan it, but it worked out good. Our 27, 2017 Point-in-Time Survey showed that there are approximately 470 homeless people living in Longview. On any given night, how many beds do you believe are available through our local shelters and organizations to house these people if they so desire? Well, your answer is 255%, 330%, 408%, 507%. The answer is actually 400. We have 400-plus beds in Longview on any given night. So the reason I put this forward, we talked about this in our Homeless Task Force meeting last week, here, here's the point of that. And there are organizations in town, including Highway 80, that will never turn a person away that needs a bed for a night, which means there is no reason anyone should ever have to sleep on the streets in Longview, Texas, because we have as many beds as are needed for our homeless population if they so desire. Now, we cannot make people go to a shelter and sleep, but if they want to sleep in a bed, we will provide it for you in Longview, Texas, because that's what this community does. So I thought this was very pertinent, very, I didn't realize that, and I, I thank Sean, Sean's not here, but this was something that was concerning to me. I wanted to know, you know, how many beds do we have, what, and I know, and I mentioned, there are requirements, certain organizations have certain requirements, but they're not impossibilities. If you want a bed and you want to comply and you want to have a place to sleep, then we will provide that. So I thought that was very interesting, and I'm, and I'm glad to know that, because it makes me feel better about what we're doing with our Homeless Task Force, because we are providing for those who need in our community, and we will continue to do that. Okay, this is kind of a no-brainer now, who's going to win the NBA championship? After last night, I think it's pretty obvious, and 37% of y'all said Golden State, 12% said Cleveland, 51% who cares about basketball. Okay, if the Mavericks or the Spurs were in it, you'd care about basketball, or the Rockets, yeah, we'd be caring about it then, I know that. Okay, our Homeless Task Force update. Do we have, no slide, okay, very good. The Homeless Task Force has been making a lot of progress. We have continued to discuss the details of coordinating a one-stop-shop service fair to help the homeless individuals get connected to available resources, which we feel are going to be very important, as we'll bring those to you very soon. Task Force members have been researching public education efforts and programs of the communities, which we're trying to take things, you know, not every, my dad used something on this topic, not every round peg fits in a square hole. Just because something works someplace doesn't mean it's going to work here or there. So we're taking a lot of different efforts that work in a lot of different places and pulling the things out that might work in Longview to try to piece together our, our plan that I think will be very beneficial to our community. So they've really been working hard to do this. There's a lot of places that have a lot of plans, and some of them work and some of them don't, and to sift through this and to try to coordinate this into one effort, it's been amazing to see how this is taking place, and y'all are going to be very, hopefully very surprised. We continue to work out details for the homeless work program for those individuals that would be interested and able to work. We want to give individuals who want to work a chance to work if they so desire, and we're working out details to make that happen through employers here in town, and through the city, and through our transit system, and it's going to be something special if, if we can find a way to make this work and fund it. Because remember, not everybody wants to work, but those that do, we should provide an avenue for them to be able to work, and that's what we're trying to do. We're not going to force anyone to work, but those who want to work, they should have that opportunity, and we're trying to make that available. We're going to have another meeting next week, and then we will be planning to bring some recommendations to present before the city council, probably sometime this summer, very early this summer. Moving forward, I'll encourage the Task Force members and the organizations they represent to continue to work together as a community to move these ideas forward. There is a lot of things going on, and I can't wait to bring them to you all and bring you all up to date, because it's very exciting stuff. I'm going to end with something that I spent some time writing. Bear with me. Last week, we had a terrible storm come through town. We had been warned by meteorologists in the news that it would be a strong thunderstorm, but nobody knew that what we should be preparing for was a tornado. Even the National Weather Service had not warned us that we should prepare for a tornado. During all the conversations that ensued after the storm, and much of Longview lost power, I continue to think about a book that we studied together over a year ago, if y'all remember, titled The Energy Bus by John Gordon. As a reminder, the premise of this book is to commit energy to things you can control and reserve your energy for only those things. If you cannot control something, then it does not deserve your energy in attempting to control it. Since the storm, I still keep going back to the focus that during this terrible act of God, not one person was seriously injured, and we had not one fatality. And for that, I am so thankful. Yes, we had a bad storm. Yes, we lost power. Yes, we lost a lot of trees, but we did not lose a single life. And when we fail to focus on that, ladies and gentlemen, we have lost our focus. And it disturbs me that that is not what we're looking at. We're looking at the negatives, and there's such a monstrous positive in this storm. This could have been devastating to so many, many people. I'm grateful to all the men and women from AEP SWEPCO, to our police officers, our fire department, our street maintenance cleanup people, the awesome citizens of Longview who pitched in to help, because this was a massive effort. And I know it was a huge inconvenience to lose power, which is something that we have all grown very accustomed to. But once again, I'm thankful to SWEPCO for prioritizing, prioritizing their efforts to make sure our power plant was up and running, so we would have fresh, clean water. So we would have our hospitals back online to take care of the sick. I want to publicly thank Lynn Ferry Nelson, who's the head of SWEPCO in our area, who kept me informed at every turn as to the progress SWEPCO was making, which allowed me to keep our citizens informed, and for that, I am very, very grateful. And to call in so many out-of-town and out-of-state workers to help with this process, to get our city back up and running again. This wasn't a North Side problem, a South Side problem, this was a full-citywide power problem. I lost power at my home and at my place of business for three days, then I lost it again on Thursday. So don't think I wasn't without power. People kept saying, "Well, you've got power." Well, trust me, I did not. I want to thank a gentleman named Cody Gill of Gill Electric. I've never met this man before. He came to my office on Memorial Day evening, late, late in the evening, and worked until after midnight to hook up a generator in my office so I could provide services for patients that wanted service and planning for services on Tuesday morning. That, my friends, is what Longview is all about, selflessly serving others. I also want to thank the citizens of Longview who drove by while I was out Sunday evening until midnight, helping direct traffic where trees were down, who stopped to offer me water and a light so that I wouldn't get run over, and just good neighborly assistance. I want to thank the businesses in Longview and our councilmen and women who went out and distributed food and water to help our neighbors. And yes, I know not everybody heard the sirens, I know that. And for that, the city is working every way we can to remedy the problems that we see. But know that we take public safety as our primary job in this city, and we will do everything we can to keep our citizens safe. We heard you, Longview. That is why we tested the sirens last Wednesday after the storm, and when we tested them, all 20 sirens sounded. Three failed to rotate and must be addressed. We were concerned about some of our equipment that was damaged in the storm, so we retested the sirens again yesterday. 12 did not function properly. That must be addressed and fixed post-haste. But friends, any system is only as good as its weakest component. Those sirens lie on computers, programs, and power. When they fail, we are always looking for ways to troubleshoot. There is no perfect system, and as a citizen, I encourage you to look for additional ways to have warnings available to you, not just relying on one system. These are antiquated systems, antiquated ways to notify people. Dallas, two months ago, had their siren system hijacked by a computer hacker. So... So, they're not infallible. They're subject to things that are out of our control. In this day and age of technology, with smartphones, computers, there are other, more reliable avenues at times to put and get warnings from. So, be proactive and help yourself out without total reliability on someone or something Please know, there are things in this world that we cannot control, and Mother Nature is one of them. But the things that we can control, we will do the very best that we can to control them for a positive outcome for our community. I appreciate your patience. I appreciate the efforts. I appreciate your thoughts, and I appreciate every one of you that told me you did not hear the siren. I get that. But what you don't understand is we can only do what we do, and that is activate the systems when we're told to activate them. And beyond that, we have to assume that they're going to work as functional, and when they don't, we're going to fix them as quickly and as efficiently as we can. So, we have been as transparent as a city as we can be, explaining to you what we've done with our tests. We have put it out there. We're not trying to... Why would we try to hide something when we're trying to protect our citizens? That is our goal, and we will do it every chance we can. So, I thank you for your comments. I thank you for your criticisms. We're not defending or debating anything as to who heard or who didn't. That's not the point. The point is, we're working on it every day to make it better for you, our citizens, and I thank the city staff who have worked long, hard hours to do this for us. So, thank you all for listening to me, and I appreciate you all. We are adjourned.